Thank you.
It's interesting, I've only got four calls on it. There's a lot of people at the Eckler, they're very angry about it.
Well, is it rented or not?
It is rented.
To the Eckler?
Yeah.
So who said it was?
They've been back and forth in discussions, I don't know if there's so many people touching it. Eckler had a board meeting last night, I don't know the result.
We may?
Steve, Sean Bailey this week?
His surgery's on for you.
What? You're back.
We call the City Canora Committee of the whole to order. Public information notices as required under Notice by law 144-2007. The public is advised of council's intention to adopt the following at July 19th, 2022 meeting. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $33,075 plus HST, of which $8,740 is to be funded through the parking meters reserves, and the balance of $24,335 plus total HST is to be funded through the Parkade/Parking Rentals Reserve to upgrade the metered parking kiosk machine technology to EMV-enabled credit card transactions. Amend the procedural bylaw to incorporate recommended administrative changes. Authorize a budget amendment in the amount of $112,040 to be funded primarily through private sector donations for the purchase of the Walter J. Phillips Watercolor Norman Bay 1922. This time I'd ask everyone to rise and Councilor Van Wellingham to read the blessing.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. As we gather, we recognize that we are on treaty three lands, which are steep in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with our indigenous people. Give us wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Be with us today and guide us in our decision making. Amen.
Thank you, Counselor. This time I'd ask if any member wishes to declare a key interest in the general nature thereof, either on items on today's agenda or from a meeting in which a member was not in attendance. Seeing none, ask for the reading on motion number one, please.
Thank you, worship. Resolution number one, move on myself, seconded by Counselor Mellon.
No, don't move on.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mark.
Resolution number one, your worship, move on myself, seconded by Counselor Smith. With the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held June 7th, 2022, and the special committee of the whole meetings held June 10th and 21st, 2022, we confirm as written and filed.
All in favor? Motion's carried. Good to see that we have a council that's all wants to participate today. Hopefully that'll be a carry forward throughout. At this time, we have one deputation and Suzie Mello?
Yeah.
Welcome you today. Suzie's gonna be leading us through the update on the Pocket Park project. Welcome.
Thanks. Was this my station? Yes. Sorry, I went to the wrong door. I didn't get a microphone. Hello, I'm Suzie Mello. I'm landscape architect with Brook McElroy in Winnipeg, and we have partnered with Grounded Architecture here in Canora, and we're working on this Pocket Park project. Who do I speak to to change the slides?
Heather.
Okay, perfect. Oh, hello. Hi, Heather. Okay, so we did a presentation a couple months ago, just giving you an update back then, but I'm just gonna do a quick refresh, this won't take very long. I understand everyone's terribly busy, so... This is back in April, the big snowstorm that came that particular day, and so we did an onsite feast celebration just to get information about the site and how people are using it and the needs and wants for it. So we had a site plan there, and everyone interacted with it, wrote on it, and that's in the next slide. So here it is. Here, we did a quick summary, just taking all that information that was fair bit on the site plan and summarized it on the right. Next slide, please. This one you'll probably be familiar with, we showed last time. So we've translated into a place for everyone. I don't know if you can see that, so we've taken all of the information that we collected on the site and programmed it into how it can work functionally with the topography, which is a circle on this site. There is a little bit of drainage issue on one side, so we're just trying to accommodate that and integrate it into the design with all of the needs and wants that came through that session. And there's also the element of the public washroom, which everyone I'm sure is aware of. So in terms of utilities, there is underground, a place where it makes sense for it to be onsite. So that was in the orange. There was green, was a lot of plantings, community gardens, that aspect of things, and then shelter, gathering, and seating. So there isn't a lot of seating, so that was one of the big things, and also for shade, because it is very exposed here. I should say, this is by Northern Sounds Systems along Chipman. I'm sure, I don't know if everyone knows where the site is, but here it is on the next slide. So it's just on the corner of First Street and Chipman. Northern Sounds and Systems, you can see just on the bottom of the page. So there is a lot in between, and then the park site is along the sidewalk. So there is a site triangle, the corner site triangle, and also the meter setback that we're accounting for. Next slide, please. So here's the design. So I'll just go through this very quickly, and if anyone has any questions or comments, and I'll just talk about our next steps, too. So this is more so for your information and for the community of Canora, and if there is any questions or feedback, you can definitely contact us afterwards. So the washroom itself is a prefab unit from Quirk, so that is being coordinated separately, and we are just selecting finishes with Megan. We're working very closely with Megan, I should say. So the washroom itself will have, we're looking at, have a miller in it and integrating a local artist, so we're looking into that right now, so if you have any recommendations for that as well. And integrating the cloth offerings that we had at that feast back in April. Surfacial, we're just gonna, it's very simple power because it's more of an economical solution. So we're having concrete surfacing around the public washrooms just for accessibility, and ground and mulch surfacing will be in this gathering space that we have just to the right of where the public washroom is. Mulch surfacing will be in all of the planting beds, and all the planting beds are trying to use native plantings and selective trees where we can provide shade, but not obstruct the growth of fruit-bearing plants or anything that's gonna be more of a community garden-based aspect. Next slide, please. One element that we found when we were onsite that by putting those tents up, a lot of people just sort of flock to where our vertical element was. So we're looking at creating a shade structure, gathering structure. These are just precedent images on the side. This is a project that we did in Thunder Bay, just in the middle here. So we're looking at the... Oh, okay. I probably don't even need a microphone, but... So now we're just doing, making little models to see how the shade and shadow are gonna work on the site, and ensuring that what we put there will actually create interest on the ground, but also provide shade at the same time. So these are just little models that we're creating now, and that's an aspect where we're trying to figure out, together with Sean Bailey, who is also with the University of Manitoba. He has a land-based learning site here in Canora, so we're looking to see if there's a way we can integrate community and students into the creation of that piece as well. So that's something we're looking into. Next slide, is there one more? Oh, yeah. These ones, we're just, we're trying to keep space open, we don't want to overprogram it. So we're talking to a few agencies here in organizations in Canora to see how this space could be used. So Harv Canora, we've spoken to Jake in seeing if there's a way for maintenance of the plantings, but also an educational component with the plantings. I know that they have their outdoor markets, so we were looking at how much space we could put in here if there was to be an outdoor market. So this is just an example of how this space could be used. Next slide, please. And if you wanted to do food trucks, you could put a lot of, quite a few tables in there. The site seems small, but when you put people in the context, there's a lot of uses that can come from it. Next slide, please. And then this is just the final slide that we showed, potential collaborations for music. So because we have Northern Sounds and Systems, there are two, if there's a way that we can integrate that into the shade structure for gathering events that happen here, and then the pop-up piano that has happened a few times with Stephen Loof, that, there's a piano there to show you, to scale how that could work. So next steps, of course, comments and feedback. For me and the community, we're working on the 2D package, I'm going to, the design development package, I'll be sending that to Megan for comments in the next few days. And we're, and it's more so, more developed into a construction set, so that we're hoping to do mid-August. And then construction starting this year, and then the public washroom is, will be made offsite and here in October. That's it for me. If there's any questions or comments?
Counselors. Counselor Van Wellingham, please.
Thank you. The last few months, there's been a real push for autism awareness, and some of the parks now have a special place for kids with autism. And I believe in Norman Park here now has one state. Is there anything to be incorporated into this to deal with that?
No, I've not, not yet, but it definitely could be. Would that be you? I would speak further, though.
Maybe I can just speak to what we have in Norman. So we just put a calming station in, and it's ordered, it's not in as yet. I can send you what that, some information, see what that would look like, and see if that's a fit for this.
And what's the, what is the calming station?
It's for kids with autism, and when they are overstimulated, they, they found that these stations were very low, and calming them down just gives them a lot of different things to repurpose their attention. It is, but I can send you what.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Anyone else? Counselor Goss, please.
I'm wondering, which shading, shade structure are we working with here, and what does that present for us?
Yeah, so the, in, if you were a bird in the sky, in the plan view, where it says E, that's sort of just a very conceptual plan of it. Right now, we're developing that, so it would be fairly simple in that it'll be wood posts. The screening itself is what we're playing with in the angle to see if there's interest in the patterning, so that when there is shade and sun, it would create a pattern on the ground, but also at the same time, it would provide shade for whoever is using that space. So that's being developed now, but it would be similar to kind of like these slats that are being used on the spirit garden in Thunder Bay. That's sort of what we're looking at in angling them in different directions, and the spacing between them to see what that will provide on the ground.
So would we see this design before, and get approval on this design, or we're just doing cart launch?
Yeah, that one for sure. That one's gonna be more in model base, so we could send images of the 3D model.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to see that, because I sense some issues and problems arising there. But I don't want to just go cart launch, we've already had a little issue with that already. Community outrage is something we have to watch for, and it has to be, it has to be fitting. So I'd like to see before we make any move on that.
Sure.
The critical unit here was the, was the washroom, and we've been delayed on this for quite a while now, from the time that we ordered the washroom initially. So I'd like to see something progress, and something progressed fairly quickly, but I would also like the council to have some input into what it's going to look like.
Could you, would it help to clarify what the issues are, so that when we're designing it, we can keep that in mind?
Well, it does seem to be a magnet for people to hang out, and I'm just wondering if that's what we're going to create.
Yeah, right now.
The whole section of town is, has become problematic. I don't want to be, to be overconfusive on that, but there are issues in that area with a lot of people that just seem to congregate. And as we look forward, we have to be able to deal with that in ways that work properly socially and acceptable to the entire community.
Counselor Smith, please.
Yeah, and just in follow-up with Counselor Goss's comment, that's like a purgative concept, right, for shade?
Yeah, it's not solid.
Yeah. I like purgative.
You do, oh, yeah, okay.
I like shades.
First of all, now we'll...
Make sure you put it there.
Preferences will move on. Does anybody else have any questions? I just have two, just for clarification.
Sure.
The lock between where we're developing and Northern Sounds. We don't own that anymore, do we? Is that what you sold, or? Do I have it? It's sold. Correct, okay. And from a financial perspective, all the funds required to complete this project were included in the 2022 capital budget?
We do have an additional contribution that we received from a partner organization, so people likely be making a budget amendment just to recognize that, so that it's included. But all of the other funds, like the city's contribution, and the map contribution, and everything else is going on.
Thanks. All right. We're good then? Thank you very much for your time and for explaining it.
Yeah, no problem. I will see you soon. I'll get more info.
All right. So we'll go to corporate services, and first item on the agenda is Charlotte, May 2021 financial statements.
Twenty-two, that's the two.
Yeah, I'm just reading verbatim what's in front of me as opposed to...
It's because I changed it.
Yeah. That was on me.
On your data. Oh. Thank you. Nothing that is of concern in these financial statements so far. This is by no means a report on our vacancy recovery. However, I think that as time goes on, we're seeing that we're gonna, we're gonna likely need our target with the vacancies that we have so far this year, but again, I'm not, I'm not stating, I'm not going into reverted lane on that one, but I think we're, we're looking at, it's looking at that thing. I'm having all the pieces. So Roads Department, we're still not seeing the full impact of the flood disaster expenses, and I, the, really, the major ones are gonna start hitting in the June financial statements, even though we declared the emergency in May, by the time invoices come in, you're gonna start seeing that happening in June, or in June. And I had a total, and I sent it to everybody, and I can't remember what it was, $300,000 and some thousand dollars on those total expenses up until last week. Space is looking up the email, because I sent it to the leadership team.
So Charlotte, on that...
$365,000.
When we get, say, the June statements, have you created a separate line item?
We've created three separate line items in three different departments. One is loose top roads, one is emergency services, and one is park. Because we thought those were the three departments that were most impacted, and so staff knows that they need to go to those specific accounts.
Okay.
So I'm just taking the totals from those accounts. We still haven't approved things like, I don't know, and I'll check with Pable if a non-union overtime is going in there. It is, okay, so, you know. Okay, winter control maintenance, we're almost at budget already, and we haven't had a second winter season this fiscal year. Again, we'll determine what comes out of the million-dollar reserve when year-end is done next year, because right now, we're still within the budget, but of course, we'll more than likely go towards the end of this year. Vehicles and equipment. So just so you know, the May recoveries or the credits to the expenses haven't been posted, so we only have till the end of May. But the trend that I've seen in those accounts is that we are, in some cases, with some pieces of equipment, already over budget with respect to diesel costs. So we're already seeing we impact the increasing gas prices, and we can anticipate we're gonna take a hit there, because some of them are already over budget, and we see just until the end of May. Unfortunately. Other than that, water and sewer, we're still gonna do the year-end adjustments on those. I'm not seeing anything that is impactful so far, but stay tuned for some of these beyond our control influences on some of our expenses. We're definitely seeing that trend starting now.
Questions? Counselor Smith, please.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple, and Charlotte, you kind of alluded to the vacancy management, and that we'll get a more fulsome report. I'm really interested in that, because I'm still trying to get my head around how this is going to work. And I noticed that you have a line under General Government for Human Resources, and that's where we're gonna be reporting that through. And I see that the budget is actual and then what has been used in the budget. So I'm really interested in more of an in-depth report to see how that's in the future. I'm not asking for that now, or for next year.
We have provided one in quarterlies, right?
Yeah, so for August, we will get the second quarter report, we prepare for the August council meeting.
Yeah, that's great, because I'm still struggling with this one, so I'm just gonna put that out there right now. I think Charlotte is too. It's a little bit complicated, so I'm glad that we're gonna get a more fulsome thing, because it'll take a while to figure out for us how it's gonna work, how it impacts the budget and staffing, that. So thanks for that, Robert.
But it does help, it makes it more sense.
Yeah. So my other thing is, the municipal accommodation tax report is not, still not included in the financial statement.
Oh, sure.
I just think it's...
Is that for next one?
Yeah, for always, Charlotte, because that's really good information that's just to have, and I'm really interested in it. And so my other thing, as you talked about water and sewer, and we did get some funding to do the second street, some of that rehabilitation is, is for the water and sewer systems is ongoing right now. So did that money get transferred right over into the water and sewer budgets when that funding came in?
So we did account for, you may be talking about the Green Stream, the ISIP. That is going to be used for the water and sewer handling projects.
So that just works right into the water and sewer budget, right, those numbers?
Yeah, I think the ISIP Green is specific to water.
Water, okay.
I believe we had it in as revenue, correct?
A funding source for the capital.
Just, yeah, that's, you're not gonna see it in these financial statements, because these are operating.
Because it's capital?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. I was just wondering how that would work out.
But it's specifically for water, actually, and it is a funding source in our capital.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions.
Counselor Ford.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the revenue on Environmental Services and that. Should we, should we be somewhat concerned about the difference there? There's quite a stark variance year over year. I know, I know the revenue has increased substantially, but the actual revenue to date is really not much further ahead than it was last year at this time. Is there something?
We usually see our highest peaks in our summer season, correct?
We do, and also, we're gonna do the year-end accrual reversal, so I promise you, we're...
Okay.
You'll see that.
Okay.
So would it be fair to say then that next month will be more reflective of our real time? The budgets for that would also reflect that the significant revenues increases don't actually start until July 1st. That's when the new, that's when the bag takes.
Okay, good. Yes, but the Solid Waste Department, yes, sure. Sewer water was January 31st.
The January's, or the sewer water one, we've, I've always struggled with, because there seems to be no consistency in terms of when revenues of those accruals, depending on when you, you make those entries, really impacts our numbers, which, when you're trying to compare a year to year, like Counselor Ford is doing, it really distorts the numbers.
We like to get them audited first before we do the general entry, because it's very complicated calculation, and the auditor has now done it, we'll leave it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you. The municipal insurance renewal for 2022-23. Robert, you're leading this one?
Thank you, yes, so we're presenting the 2022-2023 municipal insurance renewal. This renewal is for our whole insurance profile, and we were working with Westland Insurance Group as our managing agent to support this renewal. So the renewal for this year, we were actually anticipating a 25% increase, which is on the conservative end, actually, from other municipalities. We were really pleased to see that we, our increase was just under 20%. So it's about an $85,000 increase to last year, so the total would be $531,257 plus applicable taxes. In terms of this year, we had some very interesting information gathered through our treasurer's group, which was really valuable. So out of 46 municipalities in the 15,000 to 50, or 46 municipalities participated, five of which were direct comparators, which were 15,000 to 50,000 population. And so of that, we were really able to evaluate not only our general liability, but also our costs. And we're pleased to say that we, at $6.74 per population, we are, we are one of the cheapest or most affordable insurance programs. So that was really valuable information for us, especially as we're looking at not only the comprehensiveness of our insurance, but also just the value per dollar. In terms of the overall service, we are comprehensive, and I would encourage council to really focus on page five of the municipal program. What that highlights is really the value-added services that we get through our relationship with Westland and Intact Public Insurance. We receive risk management advice and guidance. We also receive claims management services. And I have to say, the services that are provided, not only in information and research and, and just best practice, but also the support in managing our claims and working through some of those processes has been significant. And that relationship, both with Intact Public Insurance entities and Westland, has proved very valuable and has really set us on a path forward as we start to look at some of our programs where we could potentially provide different service that will, will further benefit our insurance program as a whole. I think lastly, in addition to not only presenting the renewal, there was a second recommendation that council directs administration to look at cyber insurance and to present back some options. It was noted through the survey that we were the only single-tier municipality without cyber insurance. We do have a number of systems that we host that collect all kinds of data on our residents, whether it's recreation, signing up for recreation, or processing payments through our, our direct purchase. We have data, and cyber insurance is an important part to our overall insurance portfolio. So, so those are the two elements, is really the program as a whole, as well as exploring cyber insurance and flushing that component out in our profile.
Counsel? Counselor McMullen, please.
Robert, it's, it's a bit of an odd question, but maybe it's not. I was reading somewhere in, in the package about, like, council liability insurance. And the only reason I, I bring that forward is in recent years, and more so in the future, there's more liabilities, and it's a very litigious environment we work in, as well as staff. So, and I, am I correct that that's been addressed in the policy, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Counselor Van Wellingham, then Counselor Smith, please.
Okay, thank you. This Westland Insurance Group, is any of Canora companies affiliated with that at all?
I'm sorry, I'm just...
The companies that had the insurance before?
It's just, oh, they've been bought, it was, yeah, and it's been bought, that's what I think he's asking.
Oh, it's modern?
Yeah, yeah, it has changed names a couple of times. It has changed names a couple of times. So Frank Cowan, then Gillings. It was, yeah, it was, there's two changes. So it wasn't Gillings formerly, it was Westland Insurance.
So we're insured through Intact, but we do all of our work through the Canora office of Westland.
Westland, yes, yeah. They're like our management agent, managing agent.
Show them the coolness.
Exactly, yes, same, yes. And across your. And again, you're speaking from managing in a number of different environments, similar to a third-party administrator, this relationship is super valuable. We're able to call up and say, hey, you know what? We're looking at claims for potholes. Can they give us, you know, some things that we should be looking at to improve our service? Some ways that we could educate public, you know, how do we go about this? So they've been really responsive and able to provide us that information. So it's a wonderful relationship.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, Shelley, I was just going to say Shelley's been amazing. We've worked with her for years, so yeah, excellent. But my comment is, you know, for property taxpayers, when you're looking at an insurance premium of $531,000, that's a lot of money at property taxes. And really, taxpayers can see no tangible benefit to it. So it's like you just pay it out and it's a hard one, all those insurance costs for property taxpayers.
Anyone else?
I just have one question, Roberta. On when you talk about the open liabilities and auto claims, those are over a period of time, right? They just haven't been finalized. It's not like those have all occurred in 2022.
Those have occurred in 2022.
They have.
Yeah. So just picking up off of that comment and taking onto Counselor Smith's comment, insurance has actually saved the taxpayer money when we have some significant claims. And I will refer to our largest claim was, I believe it was the rec center roof, our arena roof. That would have been the whole value of our insurance program paid out in one swoop. So, you know, insurance does allow us to transfer that risk and to be able to have more manageable costs associated with that. So when and if there is a hazard, we're able to actually recoup and pay for it without going back to the taxpayer and impacting our operating budget. So there is a significant value, but this is our claims experience. We do incur claim, and this year related to our pothole situation is the money free-thaw type of tax situation that was impacting our infrastructure. We did experience this here.
Thank you.
Thanks, that's good clarification. Thanks, Roberta.
All right, we're good. Thanks, Roberta. Move on to the budget amendment for metered parking kiosks. Heather, are you speaking to this one?
Yeah, that's me. So as counsel is aware, we moved to the new metered parking kiosks through the second summer, moving away from the metered individual parking meters in most areas. There are still some areas that have the individual meters. And these new metered parking kiosks, we were just made aware that they require a significant upgrade to the software that processes the payment. With this new EMV payment method, it will bring some positive things where now people will be able to use Interact, Apple Pay, modernized technology outside of just credit cards. So there is some positive to that, but there is a significant cost attached to the software upgrades for each of these machines. So the impact to this budget amendment is $33,075 plus HST. And really, we don't have a lot of choice unfortunately with this change. So it's technology improvements to the machines. And without them, the credit payment or any sort of electronic payment will not work. It will only take cash.
Counsel? All right. One, the procedural bylaw review, please.
As part of my ongoing policy reviews prior to this election coming this fall, the procedural bylaw is also part of that review. And this is an opportunity for the current counsel to make recommendations to a future counsel in changes to the procedural bylaws. So things that they feel may have worked well, things that could be tweaked. And there's been a couple of areas that have been specifically asked of me as the clerk to look into for consideration and to be brought before counsel. Those areas are outlined within the report. One includes the deputy mayor. One includes the proxy voting, and then consent agendas. So if we start with the deputy mayor, we have had the same process in appointing our deputy mayor for as long as I can remember. So for sure, since annihilation. And that is an eight-month rotational process where upon counsel being elected, goes in alphabetical order and it goes on an eight-month rotation. So there's really no volunteering. It's just, here's your time, and this is when it falls to you. So there are some options. I did some research with various municipalities, reached out to clerks across the province and what those municipalities do, and it varies. There is different processes for each municipality. For the most part, most of the municipalities have very similar to what we have. So that it's a rotational process which allows various members of counsel to have an opportunity to have deputy mayor responsibilities and have an opportunity to experience the, you know, chairing of meetings and things like that. So I don't know if you want to start in, start with the deputy mayor discussion, if you want to move to report that way, or if you want to just accept counsel.
Are we only looking, like having a robust discussion on these three items?
No, you can, it's yours now. You can discuss the whole procedural bylaw if you want.
Why don't you go through the three major ones?
Okay.
And we'll do, deal with those. And then if people have identified the other issues when they went through the review, then we can deal with them individually.
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll start with the deputy mayor. It's first on the list. I provided some options within the report, including as part of the election ballot for the public votes for the deputy directly. Member of council with the highest number of votes in the election and annually reviewed and appointed instead of it being appointed for a four-year term in an alphabetical order or remaining what it is today, which is appointed on a separate basis for the entire term.
Okay, so if, what my concern was, I raised this issue. Yes, it was me, Charlotte, or Counselor Smith. If there's, if you look back, and I've only been here for eight years, but there are some people aren't comfortable being in the chair. Some people haven't done a very good job in the chair when I look back over the eight years. I'm looking, I'm not, I'm talking to you, but I'm not. It's just, stand up. It really, as my perspective from the mayor's is different than when I sat at that as a counselor, is that the deputy mayor is very important to ensuring that the mayor can do his job effectively. It, that consistency, having somebody in the chair that, you know, runs very good meetings is, you know, just the experience and knowledge they gain, it just really, I think it would benefit counsel. But that's my personal view, and that's what we have to discuss. And it's, number one, if that's what we think we should have. And then it would be, okay, so then do we do it on an annual basis? Do we do it for a four-year term? Like Heather's provided us, I'm sorry, the clerk has provided us with a number of options. So that's where I was coming from when I suggested having a full-time Counselor McMillan.
I think, I haven't been around for a while and fully respecting the fact that I'm not going to be here next term. I think there's a great deal of merit in looking at a deputy mayor, either whether it's be for a year or four years. And I support a good portion of what you're saying. And with respect to consistency, having somebody in contact, also the consistency with staff. A question I'd have for Heather, like I think there's, I haven't read it. There's a number of good options here. Is it unrealistic to think that once a council is elected in this term that they would, they could appoint a deputy mayor for a period of a year or two years? Could that be done?
Yeah, it's just whatever, however be rated in the procedural bylaw. So it would be up to this council. We want to identify that process, but it would be up to this council to appoint.
Yeah, I think.
It's not done through the election process.
Yeah, I just want another comment for me. Because of the closeness to the election, I think it would be cumbersome to have it on the ballot. And I think it would make more, I'm only speaking for myself and my thoughts. I think it would make more sense to have it, the council, after the first, after the election and first orientation meeting to elect a deputy mayor. And it would be up to that council whether they wanted to do it for a year, two years, or three years. And then, again, I'm not going to be here, so those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Goss?
And then there's another potential wrinkle in that it's a matter of who chairs the closed sessions. And is there a difficulty or an issue with the mayor conducting the closed sessions? You're going to certainly have some continuity of form and meeting structure. That's another potential.
That's somewhere else? Just for clarification, if you could.
Sure. I did put a comment in on the procedural bylaw, the actual bylaw review for counsel to consider. There's, I know the history of why that, and that is pretty consistent across the province for procedural bylaws. So in order to provide that deputy mayor that opportunity to have exposure, you might have a mayor that in two years never misses a meeting. And so then you have to chair one meeting and, you know, it's hard when you're not getting that experience or exposure. So the reason they have the deputy mayor chairing the interim session is for that reason, is to serve that they get exposure and experience chairing meetings. So we can write the procedural bylaw.
We'll come back to that.
Yeah, we can write that however we want.
Counselor Corey?
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm with, I'm with the mayor that I totally agree with this direction. I don't like the rotational thing. I think over the years, things have become so complex. Unless we're prepared to put a mayor in full-time and pay them as a full-time employee or whatever, he or she, whoever it is, needs assistance. The rotational thing is great if people want to have exposure to running meetings and that. There's nothing to say that that couldn't happen anyhow. So like, I really like this direction. I just had a couple of questions in that when you say include as part of an election, that does someone run as a deputy mayor? Like, I don't, like.
So we would have to word the ballot to ensure that it's clear that you're electing this person. It's still a member of council. You're voting a member of council, but as the deputy mayor. So the wording is very specific on the ballot.
Okay, and then the one with the highest votes in that, I don't agree with. I just don't think that's the way. I think if, you know, if the public, or if the electorate votes for someone who wants to be deputy mayor, that's fine. But with the highest votes, I don't like that at all. And the other thing is, personally, I'd like to see where you have your peers around the table and that decide who that, he or she, whoever it would be. And I think, to me, that's the fairest way or whatever, short of somehow doing it as a vote. But I, I mean, that's a lot of work, as Counselor McMillan said. But I agree, I like this direction. I think it's long overdue. I know it was maybe done at some point previous, like with some municipalities. I know the current municipalities that do it that are much smaller than Canora, and they seem to work well. And everybody has their own way of determining how you get to that point. But I think it's, I think the time has come where the mayor, whoever it is, needs some assistance there, because they're strapped with everything. And it's, I don't think, I don't think that functions properly, so I support this.
Anyone else? Counselor Smith, please.
Yeah, so I'm going to take the opposite tact and support the system we have now because I don't think there's a problem we're trying to solve for here. I don't see a problem. I think it functions very well. That's my opinion. A council is seven people, and with the mayor as the head, and the mayor's only responsibility that is different from a counselor is as a spokesperson for counsel. And if you add a deputy mayor position in, that further separates the leadership of counsel from the rest of counsel. Counsel should be a body. So I think that would lead to all sorts of problems. When you look at the deputy mayor rotation, that's a succession plan. That's training and development. If we want to encourage younger people to get involved in politics, being a counselor is a stepping stone to being a mayor. That's a learning opportunity. So if you're not running a meeting, that's a judgment called. If you're not running a meeting in accordance to good principles when it's running a meeting, correct that behavior. When you have younger people running for council, they tend to be, have young families, full-time jobs, and being on council is not a part-time job. There's a lot of work involved. So if you're going to be assuming additional duties as a younger counselor with families, they may not be able to take that on, especially women. So they might have to step back and not have capacity to take on that role. So at full-time, that disadvantaged them. An eight-month rotation works because everybody gets that exposure. Not everybody will like it. They may decide being a counselor for me, but being mayor is just something that I'm not willing to do because of the hard work involved. It allows people to make that decision. So I think it's, like I said, I don't think there's a problem that needs solving here. I think if we look at grooming younger members of the community to want to be involved, you have to give them that exposure to being a mayor. That's part of being on council. I just think that that eight-month rotation, we do it with staff. We offer them succession planning and training development. Why would it be different as a council? We want younger people to come out and be on council and be future leaders in this community. We have to give them the opportunity to develop those skills and/or decide whether or not that's a job they want in the future or not. So why would you take that opportunity away from people? And I'm just going to put it out there that sometimes it's a struggle on council when you might have two people in a leadership capacity and might marginalize others on council. I think that it's important we remain a council as a body. That's how we're set up, that's good governance. And I fully support the rotational process we have now because there's lots of valid reasons to keep it in place.
I would just respond, and this goes far beyond chairing a closed-session meeting. I'll give you an example. We're dealing with a matter right now that's potentially impacts the city $4 million a year. And so on a rotation, if I'm not available and the deputy mayor steps in, they have no knowledge of what's going on. They learn, and then all of a sudden their eight months are over, and now we're right back. There are some things that go far beyond this table that encompass what the job is of being a counselor. And I don't think whether you have a deputy mayor full-time or not changes whether or not we're a team around this council table. If we're all here for the right reasons and we're working together, we will accomplish, you know. I've tried to do a really good job of sharing information that we didn't always see in the past. So I think that's incumbent upon the team. It doesn't matter whether you get to be eight months as running, chairing a meeting. That's my thoughts, Counselor Goss.
Can I just supplement?
Yeah.
I just want to address your point is, no other, if we're operating as a council, as one body, no other, one council. no other, one councillor should have more information or have access to more information than another, any other councillor. That's what a deputy mayor will do. And that takes away from the one body, seven people on council. So I think that's, um, um, more of a reason not to have a deputy mayor. Every council should be involved in all council business all the time. We should all have the same information all the time.
Counselor Goss?
As I look at it, I look at the options here, include as part of the election ballot. That's too cumbersome and presents all kinds of difficulties. A member of council with the highest number of votes, I think that's, to me, that's a no go. Because for one, that disadvantages any of the incumbents because generally incumbents don't always finish in, in the top, on the top. I, I prefer, uh, rather than, uh, the participant medal or ribbon method, I prefer that the city, the council as a whole would annually review and appoint for a selected time. And that could be one year, that could be two years, that could be four years. There are people who, uh, who may not feel comfortable taking the role. There are people who may not be able to, uh, efficiently move forward, um, closed session meetings. And I think that would all come through as, as council has an opportunity to review and, and build on that. So I, I'm, I'm looking at the third option as, which, uh, it probably is, is fairly democratic and it doesn't, uh, draw any lines between that member and the rest of council.
Counselor Van Wellingham?
I hear you. I'm in favor of the current system, how it works here right now to with rotational on the eight months. I think it works out really good and it gives a person the option to opt out and then the next one comes in. It's pretty simple. But I'm just curious, did it ever come up about the ward system at all in these different municipalities? Did Kenora look at that at all?
Um, I mean, there are ward systems, every municipal is different. So there are ward systems across the province, but an amalgamation decision was made to, um, go to one ward and not have councillors act as, um, specific to one area of the community. So we broke away from the ward system. But is it still, um, available in the province of Ontario? Yes. Can we do that in this election? No, we're passing the timelines that that decision can be made, so that had to be made last, that at the end of the issue last year. So we're past that timeline to make any change.
So what do you need from us now? Well, Heather's saying.
So I need direction because I need to present a procedural bylaw next week. And I have to have consensus as far as what council's looking for that to look like. So, um, if, if you're looking for the rotation that, or the, not the rotation to have one appointed, then I need how that appointment looks like so that I can prepare the procedural bylaw.
So it would appear based on what everybody's saying, that majority are for a deputy mayor.
So then how will that deputy mayor be appointed?
And it seems from what people said, they prefer the annual review. Number three.
Yeah, I, sorry, uh, I, uh, again, agree with the deputy mayor in that. But, um, that's just minor window dressing from eight months to a year or whatever. I think if you're going to do it, you do it. You know, Mayor Rayner's right. Everybody who sits around here is part of the team. It's a matter of flow of information or whatever. Deputy mayor, whoever it might be, might be involved in certain files or, or whatever the mayor deems or council deems necessary. All those details have to still be worked out. If you're going to have a deputy mayor, have a deputy mayor. If you're, um, there's no really changing from a year, from eight months to a year. We're not really changing much. So from my perspective, um, I mean, I support the deputy mayor. It's either have it or don't have it. For the term, uh, maybe even two years would be okay in that. But I think on an annual basis, I guess, it's just another thing that gets in the way of everything else that we're trying to deal with. So I'd rather see it for a longer period of time. But I, I mean, I support the concept of deputy mayor, but not the one year. I, I just don't think that goes far enough.
Okay, so Counselor Corey is recommending a minimum of two years. As if we go through this process. Are you for that?
That would be determined by the new council. How, how long that, or not.
The procedural bylaw will set in place what the rules are for the new council.
So Heather, just to clarify, council, the next council is to determine this internally. That would be done through secret ballot, just at one of the initial meetings?
Yeah, it wouldn't be done unless it specifically said secret ballot. It would be show of hands. We don't do secret ballots, uh, unless it specifically says that. So if, if council recommends that this change be made, and it comes, the other thing that council can consider is they don't establish it. They leave it as eight month rotation, they let the new council make that decision. So there's that option. However, what happens then, at, for those of you who've been on council for a long period of time, you'll recall that during the inaugural meeting, um, those, that deputy mayor is appointed at that inaugural meeting. And it's set up as their rotational basis during that meeting, and it is done by resolution. So at the inaugural meeting, there needs to be a deputy mayor appointed, um, or you don't have anyone. You would go to just a rotation starting in alphabetical order. But again, that needs to be cleared in that procedural bylaw.
I think we're complicating it.
Yeah.
We, we establish whether we're going to do it, and we establish the timeframe. So Counselor Corey, you're recommending a minimum of two year. So. I'm sure. Counselor Smith?
It doesn't matter to me.
I'm good with the rotation that we're doing now, every eight months.
But I think we're, what's going to come forward is the deputy mayor position for two year? Or left out for two, every two years?
The way through the term of council.
Okay.
Good.
And it would, just for clarification, it would be elected, um, by?
Council.
The council as a whole.
By the new council.
Yeah.
All right, could you lead us through proxy voting, please?
So this was another area of, um, concern identified by a member of council. Just that this proxy voting was brought into effect during the pandemic. So it was something that the province permitted, um, under the municipal, municipal law. Allows municipalities to have the authorization, uh, to provide proxy voting by a member of council. So the bill that came into effect was obviously addressing the time, um, with the pandemic and the concerns of, you know, if someone was to get sick for long periods of time, that their voice could still be heard at the council table. Now, since then, we have all sorts of electronic means to participate. Our, our procedural bylaw also allows you to participate electronically. So the question is really, has been presented of, you know, is proxy voting still the right thing to do to have within our bylaw? So many municipalities didn't move to proxy voting and didn't permit it. This council, uh, did wish to have that included in our procedural bylaw. So it's just something for consideration moving to the next council, uh, whether or not we want to continue proxy voting.
Counselor Smith, please.
Yeah, I, I think that we should remove proxy voting, proxy voting from the procedural bylaw. I think it, it's, um, an obligation and a responsibility of elected, um, councillors to be at the table when a vote is taken. Um, new information comes, um, sometimes right at a council meeting where a councillor will change their vote. I mean, it's happened to me, and I think you need to be at the table to do that. I think it sends, um, I, I, I don't like the message it sends when a councillor is not at the table and is proxying their vote. And as Heather has pointed out, there's several opportunities, um, when councillors are out of town on vacation or even at home, you know, to be, um, um, able to participate electronically and, and, and vote electronically. So I think the opportunities are there, um, for councillors that will not be at, uh, out of town when, when we're having meetings. So I would, um, support removing proxy voting.
Anyone else?
We're still able to, to, to vote electronically by, at, at a distance.
Yep, our procedural bylaw allows for that electronic participation. The only thing you don't count towards is quorum. So if you ever got to a point where, you know, you're electronic and the members in the room must count as the.
But the proxy doesn't break quorum either.
No, it doesn't.
Is anybody, for, but I've only heard from one council.
But with poten, with the potential for voting electronically in, in absentia or when you're online, I have no problem with removing the proxy voting.
I'm fine with removing it. I, I feel kind of vulnerable because I'm not going to be here. So I'm just giving my opinion.
But experience and knowledge is, that's important.
That's why.
Part of the process.
Thank you.
Okay, so in last areas, consent agendas, um, it's something that I've considered for many years. We moved to, um, a housekeeping, uh, process which allows, is, is similar to a consent agenda. However, housekeeping matters are still broken out by individual resolutions. So you'll see at peak times of the year when projects are starting and there's lots of different agreements and things like that, the agenda can be longer, um, you know, we'll be at over thirty resolutions because of those individual resolution. Consent agenda just condenses it all into one resolution. And, um, if there is something at the start of the meeting on the consent agenda that a member of council wants broken out, we can do that. And you still have all the same opportunities to, um, raise concerns about something that's on the consent agenda. It just speeds things up. That's really all it is.
Counselor Corey and then Counselor McMillan, please.
Thanks, Mayor. So last, in May, we started this with the Kenora District Service Board and did exactly that, like the first time we did it, uh, and we're still, we're still working through the whole process. But it, it cut down the amount of time of talking about something that, um, you should be fully aware of anyhow. Like if you have the information reports in front of you and you do your, the work, put the time in ahead of time, it, it's fine. And, and on that particular meeting, there was two items that were identified at the beginning that were removed or broken out from the consent agenda. And then there was a discussion that ensued throughout the meeting. But it, we had the same results, same information, and it probably cut down the meeting by over an hour. Uh, on a five hour meeting or whatever, an hour is a lot. And everybody had all the appropriate information. And I think they're a very efficient way to go or at least explore. So I, I'd be in support of, uh, looking at that scenario.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor McMillan?
I would, I would support, uh, moving to a consent agenda. The library board uses a consent agenda and spates you at ninety-nine point nine percent of those meetings, and it worked pretty efficiently. And the onus falls upon me as a board member at the library to grade the material and prepare it. I find consent agendas are, are, are a good way of all grading.
Counselor Van Wellingham, please.
And we're going to move ahead with this with a K D M A on Thursday. It comes up for discussion again. We'll probably follow P D S P.
Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I, I'd be fine with that. Meetings tend to get long. I do note that in Heather's report, she put something like financials could be collude, included in a consent agenda. And I would say that financials should never be included in a consent agenda. Budget is what drives our process and drives everything we do. And whether or not we comment on it, I think it needs to always stay standalone. I know that's just semantics going forward, but I wanted to throw that out there.
I'm in favor of moving with consent agenda.
So just for, following up on Counselor Smith's point, who establishes what goes into the consent agenda? Is it the clerk and the C A O or?
Yeah, the clerk typically will, I mean, in consultation with the C A O, but the clerk typically will look at the items that are coming forward and will, um, so keeping in mind, it's similar to what our housekeeping reports are. If, if there's no decision to be made, so when Charlotte reports her financial statements, you have lots of questions and you'd like more information, you want to understand that. But you can't change the information that she's presented. The numbers are the numbers. So it, it, she may have to provide you for the follow up to it, but the numbers are the numbers. Similar to the minutes that come forward, the agreements, you, you've already discussed those, you already are aware of them. Now the funding agreements are coming forward for execution. So those are just items that are being presented to council. Water and wastewater reports, the same thing, you can't change the content of what is in there. You can still ask questions, but those are the types of things that you would typically see on a consent agenda. We don't have to include financial statements, lots of municipalities do, instead of breaking out an individual, um, resolution for it because you're, you're just accepting the financial statements. But if the will of council is to not, we don't have to.
So using those two examples you gave with the financials and the sewer and water, without, you can still question, get information without pulling it out?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So is that addressed?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it addresses mine too.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mayor.
So I think we have consensus then on, on that one?
Consensus on the consent.
Okay, so then we'll go through, Counselor Goss, you raised an issue, um, that wasn't part of the, the three that you wanted to have a discussion on?
No.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, you did.
I can't remember what it was.
Uh, deputy chairing in, in camera.
Right.
I, I withdraw that. I understand that there are issues, there could be issues with that. That's, that's, to me, that's, that could be a burden on the mayor.
Well, I, I think by having, if, if it goes through the, the deputy mayor, then there is consistency on the check.
Yep.
All right, Counselor McMillan?
Just, uh, a technical question. Heather, um, at any time during the term of the council, procedural bylaw can be revisited, correct? So is, if I may, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the new council coming in and whatever we adopt through this discussion, it can be revisited by the new council, correct?
And typically what I do, um, is give it about a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight to twelve months, and then I will bring the procedural bylaw in before or again for any recommendations that want to come to the new council. Typically by then, the new council's, you know, pretty comfortable with procedure and process, and they might have different concerns or ideas, and they want that changed during this back term of council.
Thank you.
Are there any other issues or questions council had on the, the rest of the bylaw? All right. So Heather, you have everything? I'm sorry. I saw I'm here, I was supposed to refer to this. Which I don't think we, we tend to. All right, so that brings us to, um, the Blue Box recycling transition. So I'll turn over to Marko to lead us through it, please.
Okay. So in Ontario, the Blue Box operations, uh, are, are going to be changing here shortly due to provincial regulation. And basically it'll be run by a producer based and operated funded program which will consist, uh, collection of single family residences, multi family residences, long term care homes, retirement homes and schools. Circular Materials of Ontario is the producers firm that they have selected to act on their behalf to, I guess, run with the regulations and make the implemented changes to the program throughout Ontario. Currently Circular Materials is offering a transition period for those municipalities to either opt in or opt out of recycling effective July, with that term for the transition period being effective July first, twenty twenty-three to a termination period of December thirty first, twenty twenty-five. Circular Materials at this point in time is looking for direction from municipalities to make a decision whether they're going to opt in or opt out of this transition period to provide curbside collection services. In opting out, uh, what would happen is Circular Materials would then, uh, secure private contractors to replace the municipal collection curbside, uh, services. Again, with a private contractor, uh, should the municipalities opt out. There's some notable facts in regards to the review of, of circular materials and materials and agreements that they have presented to municipalities. that they have presented to municipalities is the, the current agreement that Circular Materials would be offering to municipalities to work as a contractor under the, under Circular Materials seems to be a reasonable contract for the city to enter into if we wanted to opt in. There's only really two minor concerns or, or flags, I guess, that came up in the agreement, and that was extra reporting requirements that the city would be required to report back to Circular Materials with certain information and data on the recycling collection system, which is thought to, to be, you know, easily handled with the current staffing complement of, of staff and workload with the solid waste department. Second factor was is that you have to improve and upgrade some of our G P S requirements in our fleet of trucks related to solid waste that Circular Materials is looking for. And in contact with our G P S provider, there didn't seem to be any kind of issues in terms of upgrading or providing that information as required to satisfy that agreement. Another factor that needs to be noted, I guess, is the collectibles at curbside would be delivered to a receiving facility which would be run by Circular Materials. And those receiving facilities have yet to be determined, and Circular Materials is currently in a process of putting requests for proposals out for those receiving facilities. And at this point in time, all we've been told is that the receiving facility will be located within a sixty-minute drive of a centroid of any municipality that wants to deliver or needs to deliver its recyc- curbside collection recyclables to that facility. Funding arrangements as per the agreement would be paid at a hundred percent cost recovery based on twenty-twenty costs of the recycling and quantities that have been captured and provided to Circular Materials for their, I guess, creating of the agreements. And that's in contrast to the current funding arrangement. We have the C I F fund which currently provides approximately fifty percent funding for the current curbside collection recycling operations, with the balance coming through taxation and net tax levy. There is a component of non-eligible recycling materials that are to be collected, and the city would have two options in dealing with non-eligible sources. And that would be, we could take those recyclables to a Circular Materials receiving facility, but we do get deducted certain payments off of that in order to use that service. The other option is to continue on as we currently do in terms of finding source markets on our own and sending those non-eligible sources to, for example, Winnipeg to either collect revenue or income from that stream that's non-eligible. And that would be the commercial and industrial and some institutional collections. In the agreement, there is a potential for three one-year extensions, but again, beyond the twenty, that would apply beyond the December twenty-twenty-five transition period ending. But those would have to be agreed to by Circular Materials in conjunction with the municipality to, to negotiate or, or, I guess, enter into those one-year extensions concurrently. So at this point, administration is, is recommending the option to opt-in and stay in recycling during the transition period due to the fact it provides synergies and cost sharing between garbage and recycling operations in the solid waste department. And it'll also provide some extra time to, during that two-and-a-half-year period, to, I guess, assess the, the overall solid waste operations and how that might look, either trying to stay in recycling or getting out of recycling after that December thirty-first, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five date. So that pretty much sums up where we're at and why we're recommending to opt-in in this transition period for recycling and collection services.
Counsel? Counselor Poirier, please.
Thanks, Mayor. So good report, Marco, fully, fully support it. And I fully, and, and I'm all for like Blue Box and recycling and, and the whole program. But finally now, the cost is being borne by who it should be, which is the producer and the packagers and that, because when you look at what, when you buy something, it's just, it's totally insane how they package some of these items now. And it takes it off the pack though, where it shouldn't be anyhow. And it places, and it places that financial burden on the producer. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of it. And hopefully there's no kinks along the way before next, next July first. But I, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing for the city and for the taxpayers.
Counselor Smith, please.
Yeah, thanks for the report, Marco. It really lays out our options quite well, and I do agree with your recommendation going forward. And the fact that we have an opportunity to review later on bodes well for us in the future. So that's good. And Counselor Poirier has laid out the objective of this new recycling box that the government has, has put forward. I think it falls for, far short of expectations of the communities. And it will be interesting to see if it changes producer behavior going forward. Will we see less packaging? It would be interesting to see if that actually does happen. So, yeah, but it is time that the consumer takes it on. They could have gone a lot farther. This is a good first step.
Counselor Goss.
I concur. I, I believe we're a long way from what we were promised with the Waste Free Ontario Act, but I think this is a step in the right direction, and I agree. Let's move some of this back onto the, onto the shoulders of the producers.
Question to Charlotte. Right now the taxpayer, it's above four million dollars, so the taxpayer is subsidizing?
Yeah, maybe not quite that much right now. And, and of course, you know, the budgeting for, for, for the revenue on that side has been, you know, been pretty high and, and so I'm watching to see if the revenues actually.
So Marco, my question would, to you would be, prior, we've had First Nation communities, you know, inquire about Blue Box service, can they be part of it? And it's never really come to any fruition. Under the new scenario moving forward, they would, would they, they would deal directly with the, the new company?
Yeah, as far as we can tell, the agreements that have been, you know, given to the municipalities here to enter into during that transition period, there's been no mention of First Nations involvement as part of our program in this specific agreement. So I'm not sure at some point in the future they'll be dealing with First Nations directly. But I guess the, the decision going forward by Circular Materials, from what we can see in the agreement, is they want to deal with the municipalities first, and perhaps maybe after this transition period, there might be some different objectives and plans they have going forward. But at this point in time, they're just specifically looking within the city of power boundaries.
So we've got direction then for the next, to move this forward? The next item is the budget amendment for the Muse. Stace, are you speaking to this?
Yes, thank you. Counsel, the report before you is related to a budget amendment in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand and forty dollars to be funded through private sector donations primarily for the Walter J. Phillips watercolor Norman Bay nineteen twenty-two. Counsel is aware that the foundational collection for the Douglas Family Art Center is comprised of the Walter J., or a significant proportion of the Walter J. Phillips collection. Since the establishment of the art center in two thousand and nineteen, several additions to the collection have been made. And an important function of the art center is to manage that collection, which includes an art advisory committee which makes reviews and makes recommendations, and then provides those recommendations to the board for approval. In two thousand and twenty-two, Muse staff became aware of two Walter J. Phillips watercolors that were going on auctions at Waddington's. Both were deemed by the advisory committee to be worthy of purchasing, and staff were tasked with finding private donors for these pieces of art. It was determined that just the one piece would be the piece that they wanted to waft based on the way that the auction was going. And the curator and the primary donor were in attendance for the online auction, and bidding was done with all the donors' approval. When the hammer fell, the price was ninety thousand dollars. And the closing costs, the total purchase price of that was a hundred and twenty-two thousand forty dollars. And all funding of this purchase has, will be coming through four private donors with the exception of ten thousand dollars, which will be drawn through the art center's acquisition budget allocation. So if you look at the operating budget of the, the art center, you'll actually see in line item to the extent of fifty thousand dollars. So this would have gone through the art advisory committee, come to the board, and then you can see the motion before you on June twenty-second, which outlines the motion went to the board, which was unanimously approved. So from a budget standpoint, again, a hundred and twelve thousand forty dollars is going to come through private donors, and ten thousand dollars will be coming through the art acquisition, online item in the operating budget. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Counselor Smith, please.
Happy that you put the emphasis on private donations, loud and clear to the public. This is not coming out of property taxpayers' pockets. The rumor about the husky, the musky coming out of property taxpayers' pockets is false. It needs to be clear in this community where the sources of funding comes from, so we can settle those arguments right at council table. Thank you, Stace.
Anyone else? All right, so the recommendation will come forward next week. Can I see a picture?
I, I'll send you.
Yeah, you just have to have it by your chair.
I'll do the letter for next time.
Please, operating grant?
Yes, so the second report before you is also related to the Muse. It is for the Muse operating grant application. And so this is a, this is a grant that council would have seen some thirty-five times over the years. It comes through the Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture, and it is not built into the budget, but if successful, it will result in a positive, positive budget impact in the amount of twenty-nine thousand and ninety-six dollars. And that amount has not changed in the last ten years.
So, questions? So it's not built into the budget?
Right.
They, they get it every year? Interesting. So then, if they get it every year and they get thirty thousand dollars, really they're asking for council for tax dollars of, you know, et cetera. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll dig into that.
All right, and next one is the recovery fund?
Yeah, thank you. So this recommendation is related to council approving the application to the museum assistance program. This is a new round of funding that has come through the federal government as a result of COVID-nineteen. And it is intended to fund museums of a certain size that have been impacted by revenue losses due to the pandemic. Given the size of the annual expenses of the museum at the range between two thousand and one million dollars, it is anticipated this could have a positive impact of forty-two thousand dollars if successful.
Counsel? All right, thanks, Stace. And your last one, I believe, is the lease agreement extension?
Yes, thank you. This report is related to the lease agreement with William W. Creighton Youth Services at Rabbit Lake. This, and the recommendation is for council and to allow a mayor clerk to enter into a one-year lease agreement for the former J M Municipal Offices. What happened upon review is we realized that when the two thousand and eighteen lease was signed, that the, it referenced a five-year term, but it actually only spoke to four years. So this is a one-year lease renewal, which will align with the intended verbiage of the initial lease.
Questions? All right. Before we, thanks, Stace. Before we go to development services, we need to go back to the procedural bylaw review. There was one item that we should have discussed that we missed, so Heather.
Yeah, just under the timing of meetings for planning advisory, public meetings. So over the last couple of years, council asked a couple of different times or have made comments just on the timing of those meetings. And, you know, sometimes maybe the whole days are the three, four hours, and then we have to go into those public meetings. So it's been suggested on different times, different days. So it's just kind of something that's fairly important, especially for planning staff moving forward, that they know, you know, what councils, when they're advertising public meetings, if there is a suggested change to the times for days, that we, we have that discussion now so, because it does form part of the procedural bylaw.
You look perplexed.
Well, I'll just comment then, because you're looking at me.
That's my natural direction, I guess.
You're like a magnet, sure.
Yeah, so what I know about the, and I get that, it's, but I, personally, I like all my meetings in one day. If I come to town, having everything in one day really works well. Some of those, the planning meetings, bylaw amendments and that, you'll come to town, it's less than a twenty-minute meeting. So I know sometimes they're a little bit longer, maybe sometimes a little bit shorter. I don't have an opinion. I just put it that way.
Counselor Poirier?
So what, what's kind of the recommendation and consensus, like they, they would be? There's, there's no, like, would they be moved to, like, at the end of the day? Or like attached, or just on a completely different day? Or like what?
Um, I've heard comments from various members of council all about. So maybe it should be on a different day, maybe it should be the after work, maybe it should be the date. Like, it's really the will of council and whether they want those to continue on a committee the whole day at noon. That was the direction of this council, so it's, I'm, staff are quite content with Tuesdays at noon, I guess is what I'll say.
Can I just, just one other clarification? You said three hours and that, can you double that? Because they're, they're not three hours.
No, it's just the open portion of the regular meeting.
They're a day. Let's, let's be on, like, the three or four o'clock, so, okay.
Counselor Miller?
I would suggest they stay on the days of the meeting. I think Counselor Smith and others make a good point that although the days get long, maybe the consent agenda is going to help a bit. But to have the consistent meetings on the same day as opposed to bringing people back, the advertising and all that sort of thing. And the other thing is, and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, but a new council coming in may want to change the meeting times, correct? Which, which they, which they can request. I would suggest leaving it on the same day.
And that's the point, Counselor Middell. I didn't include that as part of the review, although council had the opportunity to discuss that, but that really is really in the council.
This, or?
No, the meeting times, the, the meeting times. So we will leave it as is then.
I, personally, I do not like it. I just, I would rather we do it at eleven o'clock on a council meeting, just because on committee the whole, Counselor Poirier is right, we start at nine. We don't get out of here until three-thirty, if we're lucky. And so it just really pushes, pushes it along.
Having it before is very, very problematic.
If we go along and that, so we'll go. But normally in a council, we're done in an hour. So maybe we hold it after the council meeting. Just like you said, there's options.
You need a prescribed time though for, for public meetings.
There's a prescribed time, and it has to start at that time, so it's very challenging.
I was, I was with Mayor Reiner on possibly moving it to the day of the, of the council meeting, but I can see that that could be problematic if we start to run into.
Yeah, Counselor Smith's right. Some of them take twelve, you know, nobody shows up at all, and other ones go on.
And the other problem with having those on council meeting is now you're delaying the decision for another month because the decision has to take place at council. the decision for another month, because the decision has to take place at council. So if you do it on a council date, now you have a whole month before that decision. That's very, that would be great for people who have made the application and now have to sit and wait.
All right, thank you. So now we go into development services.
Excuse me, just before we get there, there's a moment to clarify, sorry. The $29,050 is actually built into the budget in the operating budget.
Yeah.
I apologize, that was my error.
Okay. And the 42 isn't, because it's a new program.
Correct.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm just trying to bring it up here. So site plan control impacts Bill 109. Yes, Kevin Sumner will speak to us. Welcome, Kevin.
Yeah. Can you hear me? Okay, yes, so this is, very much, I characterize this as a bookkeeping bylaw, but one that's required, aware that Bill 109 was passed this spring, and it touched on a number of areas of the Planning Act, many of which don't really impact our day-to-day operations, but there's, in terms of Section 41, which is site plan control under the Planning Act, it does directly impact our bylaw and requires to update the, our site plan control bylaw. Specifically, our bylaw contains provisions currently that allow it to be bumped up to council for approval at council's request, most specifically. And this isn't something, a power that council's exercised in my time here, and I can't, I couldn't actually track down the last time it had been exercised, but with the passage of Bill 109, it's no longer an option. The bill is very specific and directing that site plan control applications cannot be considered and approved by council. So what we're proposing is amendments to the bylaw that clearly change things to administrative approval without options for bringing it up to council to bring our bylaw into compliance with Bill 109's provisions, which took effect on July 1st. There's a couple of other sections that change. The bill will also allow the 60-day review period for site plan control applications, at which time a decision has to be made, or there's an requirement to refund portions of application fees after that period. That I don't expect will be an issue for the state of Canora, because we typically approve site plan control applications in under a month, so two months is certainly not a challenge for us. So those are the main details here. We're also proposing to update some terminology to reflect current position descriptions within the, within the division, within the planning section. And that's, I think that sums everything up.
Counsel? Counsel Poirier?
Thanks. So Kevin, is this a good thing, or, like, because I'm always leery about when they make changes in the Planning Act and they say it's supposed to be, supposed to streamline things, but we always see that it doesn't, so.
Well, calling things good or bad in planning can be very much a matter of perspective. I'm sure, I'm sure there's some people that will see these, and there's very good reasons, I expect, that this was included in Bill 109. There's, I think, very loud lobby for keeping things administrative and removing some of the political involvement, but also I certainly respect that, you know, this is traditionally something where elected officials had the ability to become, you know, to make themselves the decision makers. And so, you know, I won't say it's good or bad, I'll say it accomplishes, I think, something that, you know, that there's a vocal call for. And there's some changes in there, like the 60-day review period. There are cities like Toronto that are saying, well, 90% of our site plan applications don't get approved within 60 days, which isn't, as I said, isn't a concern here in Canora, thankfully, I'm happy to say, but I guess the delay was something that they're concerned about down there.
I'll just, I'll use the word, is it a positive change then? So I won't use the other word. It's a positive.
Yeah, it accomplishes some things that I think that are generally positive.
Thank you.
Counsel Mcdonough?
I think, Kevin, just basically, at the end of the day, this is a legislative change.
Yeah.
Correct? It's not something you're proposing to council to consider. It's going to be legislated.
It's, it's your bylaw to change, but we have to change it.
Well, I think that's an important differentiation, because when you mentioned about taking it out of the political arena and that it's legislated, it's not council saying, we're taking this out of here because we're afraid of the political implications. It's a legislative change.
Yeah.
And I think that's important, so thank you.
Counsel Smith?
A comment and, well, two comments, I guess. I noticed that we're changing some of the terminology when it comes to positions. When I reviewed it, it hadn't, I noted that it hadn't been changed yet, like director and in planning, I just, I just wanted to show you that I do read my stuff.
Well, we know that.
So, but the other thing is, as Kevin said, it's legislated, we have no choice over good or bad, indifferent, but it does remove, remove the political body, which is what we do, and we represent our constituents as politicians. They're the first people they're going, they're going to come to when they have a problem. And site plan is an issue for many people, and you hear it lots of times when people are neighbors or reviewed. And we did have a deputation probably a year ago, which was an excellent deputation on the property that we were looking to rezonate on the highway, and the deputant that came forward to council as a political body, looking for site plan consideration, right? She had some excellent suggestions. This is about the new, I think, property we're zoning for a hotel or something by Tim Hortons, so I'm not sure if you recall that. But you actually mentioned, Mayor, to the planning committee, she, this, she has come forward, the neighbor's come forward, some excellent site plan suggestions that would mitigate some of the issues in the neighborhood. And so now we're removed from it. So I would suggest to people, they do have those kind of concerns, actually do come to a de, do a deputation to council and council will further on to planning. So, you know, it, it's just an opportunity for the community to express and come up with some good suggestions when development directly impacts them.
Yes, through the chair, just one, one important additional note. One power that council does retain is when there's official plan and zoning bylaw amendments, as a condition of approval, council can require that there be site plan control approval. So that is something that is retained by council. To require that there be that approval is just, the approval is handled administratively.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. That's good clarification.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Kevin. Next, we'll... Counsel McMillan?
Thank you.
Welcome, Melissa. And Melissa will walk us through the next one.
Certainly, yes. So the recommendation is to give three readings to the bylaw to open up and establish a public planned highway. And before I elaborate on that recommendation, I'll just give a little bit of background on this one, because it is a little unique. So in 2018, the City of Canora, in collaboration with the Ministry of Transportation and 24 property owners of Dubrein Island North, did construct a parking lot off of the bypass. And the purpose of this was really to provide safe access for 28 water-access-only lots on Dubrein Island North. As this parking lot does provide public side road access off a highway, administratively through the Ministry of Transportation, we are required to make application for an entrance permit. And a road opening bylaw is one of those requirements for us to formally apply for an entrance permit. Now, in the recommendation, you'll note that it is a very small portion of the parking lot we're requesting that you open up and identify as a public highway. And just a note of, there was an error made in Schedule A, I do apologize for that, which actually incorrectly identifies the area as a 10-meter by 20-meter area. We've actually clawed that back to a 10-meter by 1-meter area. And that's where the recommendation, that's what the recommendation is today, and that's what I will request that the bylaw read as well. So we are asking that you identify only a small portion of that parking lot right off of the bypass as a public highway, bearing no name. And there's a little bit of background reason for that. So we are required to make application for an entrance permit with MTO, because it does provide access off the highway. But let's not forget, in 2017, council did pass a bylaw under Section 326 of the Municipal Act, that this project was partially funded by those residents of Dubrein Island North. And so there is an important component here to maintain that parking lot for only the users of Dubrein Island North. So that's kind of where this, this one's a little bit different than some of the other road opening bylaws we see. So that's basically the summary of the report. If there's any questions, I'll have to answer those.
Counsel? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll go around the table quickly then, and we'll start with Counsel Poirier, please.
Nothing, Your Worship, thank you.
Counsel McMillan?
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel Smith?
Nothing today, thank you.
Counsel Goss?
Happy to see the waters are going down and anticipating that by mid, mid-August, I guess, we might see some normal levels on the Lake of the Woods. I would encourage people who are driving to pay attention to the fact that there still is a lot of debris floating around, and pay attention to slowing down as you move past shoreline structures that are obviously compromised.
Thank you. Counsel Ben Longham?
Oh, I'm good, thanks. All right. The only thing I want to comment on, and I want to thank all my, I was going to say staff, which is, that would really get you going, I confess. Team around the table, like, Canada Day was a lot of fun. It was because seven of us working together, and we even, somebody inadvertently walked by, and he was there the entire time, so I want to thank Kyle. But I want especially, Stace, extend thanks to the staff, like, so many positive comments about what transpired at Canada Day down at the Argo front. And that's because of a lot of work from behind the scenes from, from your team, so thank you very much. Again, it was, it was probably the best turnout we had with councilor, and just all seven councillors, everybody working together. And the CAO, I think, probably didn't want to see her appear for a while. Thanks to everyone. It was, it's just nice to see people happy and excited and enjoying themselves again, which will lead to this week's, like, our first street party is, or the street market is, is that. And so, things are slowly coming back, which is, you know, it's good to see. The, the, what's the word you always use, Counsel Goss? When we have people all over the place?
Oh, animation. Animate the streets.
Animate the streets. When you go by the, where Beaver Tales now is, like, it's just a busy, active area. More restaurants have opened up that, you know, it took a couple of years for some of them, but it's just good to see people out and about and enjoying themselves, so, thank you for that. Resolution number two, please.
That's me. I'm Mr. Chair, moving myself, set by Counsel Goss. That pursuant to Section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended, authorization is hereby given for council to move into a closed session at, time, Heather?
10:42.
10:42 a.m. to discuss items pertaining to the following. Number one, disposition of land. One item, Central Park. Item two, educating and training members of council. One matter, CAO update.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. We are adjourned.